Amongst them, we have our secretariat, the Umama Okakaza.
Sine rovisile gubala, we too Umamukakaza.
We also have in the secretariat, Umamu Pumla Nyamza.
Sipinde sibeno Umamu Pumla Nyamza.
She's raising her hands all the way from the back.
Nange pamesisanda lapa ngimova.
Then we have also in the staff, our content advisors, Dr. Manenge.
Sibeno Dr. Manenge osluleka yoyo lapa yagumsebenzwe toswenzayo.
Also have our second content advisor, Umamtkasha.
Uwesbili Umamtkasha.
We have from the researchers of parliament, Umampepetega.
Sibeno Umampepetega omunye wabarisa ya umamabtwaningi.
We also have other researcher is Umamkuwabe.
Uwesbili Umamkuwabe nange pama.
We have other staff contingency of a parliament communication department that is responsible for covering this parliament sitting of the committee as we have the public hearings on the preservation and development of the agricultural land bill, who will be ensuring that this session is live on parliament TV. They will also be taking pictures during this session. So we have come with our own paparazzi to do that. We would like to request everyone, once we start the session, please do not take any pictures or any videos because we'll be in a live parliament sitting.
Sambage na be tugebezo kumana abazobe be vasto paula yoke intesi yenzayo, zobe si vela guti TV lapa yaguparlament TV. So si atrela wakutina sonke gineskatikube gintlelelize, singa beseshuti tombe si tetama video, ngabe zobe sespazamisa ulhlelo opa ellheliwe iParliament.
We also amongst us have the staff from public relations, who have been able to make sure that this session is draped accordingly with the parliament logo and that all of us must be clear that we are in a full parliament sitting with all the banners that we see here.
Sibegene abazo kumana nompahati. Njobanbona beslobisile gugu uhle gugue vela namanloko eParliament kunsaguguti njobasikela se iParliament ngo.
We also amongst us have our interpreters, who will make this English understandable in Zulu as well as Zulu understandable in English.
Sipinde futi sibeno doliga abazobe benza lulugutsonkesungisa skulunya sishio ngese Zulu, ne sizulu sonke zokulunya sishoge genanesungisa.
I therefore want to ask all of you to be able to utilize any of your mother tongues. As in South Africa, we have 12 official languages and we are most welcome to utilize any of them. We do have interpreters here with us, who will ensure that what you say or what we say is properly understood by yourselves.
Singia atrela wunkulula wutinesebense ulimilwenulebele. Lae South Africa iilime isemte tueni se sentuzi shumnambili. So niyakulula wakutusabense ulimilwa komokuluga bakonotoliga bazoli shogo limo zezua uonke onke. Siabong.
Also in our midst, we have the protectional services in parliament that will assist us in ushering people into their rows as we may be seated in an orderly manner. But also when we start the session, they will identify the people that we have been able to identify to speak, who will be able to take up the seats in the center here and everyone will therefore be afforded a opportunity to make their oral submissions.
Sipinde futi sambena abazosiza ngazogvigelega nokpepa, abazosiza wutesaligale, nokutuma sekfikis katsetzokuluma simbono zokuluma bahlale lae hlaseleni woglandelana, wutmatoli tubo utusho ngomlomo office wuti iParliament iliguzume elananalumtetos vivinyo.
Amongst us, we also have officials of the Department of Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development in the province as well as in the national department.
Sipinde futi sibeno abasabenzu nomani ikuulu zo mnyango wezolimo noktutugiswa komthaba ganyenoktutugisawendawo zasemakaya abasabenza lakisfundaso sakwazulnadal bakona paga tuiwe tu.
Amongst the team from the province or the official leading the provincial team is Ubao Untlantam Daveni, who's with us seated at the back.
Lapa gumnyango wezolimo logasunatal Ubavo Untlantam Daveni oweyeno bapete nange hle ngimove pamesisanda.
We also have from the national department, Umamulidia Bosoka, who's the chief director responsible for land use and soil management.
Sipinde sibeno Umambosoka ovela epitoli wiovisilega national ukona na epaga tuiwe tu.
We have also Ntadere Ralph Sebi Felo from the department and in the office of the minister.
Sibeno babu Ralph ovela eofficeini legan mbongo sheno mompatiso.
Allow me to invite the official responsible for this Mkungundlov district municipality to officially welcome us here.
Ngiatela gungmogela ovela gungkungundlov gumaspala wala yamkungundlov, wutezazo samogela lapa.
We have been informed that the mayor and the speaker of Mkungundlov district municipality as well as a representative of Msundusi municipality will be doing the welcome.
Sijelu wuti umayaa sotolop no somlomo wala wala lapa gumaspala wasmkungundlov, oweyeno ozobe esamogela la.
No official.
No mage abasabenzu abavela gumaspal wasmkungundlov.
It's very interesting that elected representative by the people, when it comes serving the people and being there for the people, they abandon ship and they are not here. So people of Mkungundlov and the broader district, you should take note that when the parliament of the Republic of South Africa comes to your district, those that you've elected and given the mandate to represent you are not here to ensure that they are able to listen to matters that you raise in terms of service delivery as well as matters that you'll be raising directly on the plight that we are witnessing in this constituency.
Abanga utabanbasema respecti, paneki ne kapele, wutuma iParliament gazo lonke lifigile lae yamkungundlov, lizegiini abantu enbaketile wutibanmele banseze bangabi konma, wutibezo izinvozine.
You clearly are heading to an election year next year and you should be very observant not to make the mistake again of electing representatives that don't do their work.
Moonyagosayo sia vota, nengalenzhi pu utaguti nipinde futi nivotele abantu azolindelu wutibenzu umsebenzi, kota bangawe nsumsebenzi.
We'll therefore proceed as the portfolio committee on agricultural land reform and rural development get into the cracks of the work that we are here for, which is to conduct the public hearings on the preservation and development of agricultural land bill, which is also known as Pedal Bill, which has brought to us here today. It has been introduced to parliament by the Department of Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development and was further referred to the portfolio committee on the 2nd of February 2021. The Pedal Bill seeks to promote the preservation and sustainable development of agricultural land throughout the entire landscape of the Republic of South Africa.
Sizo kubegage nomsebenzwe tu wo sugu, wogutingida umtetos vivinyo, wogolondolozo noktutugiswa komthaba wezolimo ehuazuangne Pedal Bill lo umtetos vivinyo. Yuo kuslethi lapa namthangi, watu loki parlamende ngumnyango wezolimo, oktutugiswa komthaba, ganyenoktutugisawendawo zasemakaya. Wasuletho lapa gipotfalo committee ye zolimo, noktutugiswa komthaba, noktutugisawendawo zasemakaya ngofebrary 2021. Le Pedal Billige ifuna ogulomtetos vivinyo, itutugiswa wutumthaba ma ovigele ma shlagulwe usajenzwe omthaba wezolimo, wizelonke eSouth Africa.
May I take this opportunity to also welcome the Honorable El Damine, who hails from this very province kazo lunatal, who has been able to join us.
Ni kala ukthatali tuba mpinengmogela mltoni shawul Damine ovela gusolese sfunda zesa kwazulnadal, ose konapaga tuiwe tu.
In terms of the bill we are here to look into and have the public hearings, currently on the subdivision and the use of agricultural land, which is controlled through the subdivision of the Agricultural Land Act known as Sala, Act Number 70 of 1970, which prohibits the subdivision of agricultural land without the consent of the Minister of Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development. Sala has been able to protect, albeit to a limited extent, the loss of agricultural land to other non-agricultural activities.
Njengamange okshuganiswa komthaba wezolimo usapetwe umteto oktuwa isala, o number 70, Skapa 70, wangon 1970. Lo umteto auvumeli nomama oyaktrita wuti omthaba wezolimo okshuganiswe ngapandla wemvome kangongo sheno mompatisa wezolimo noktutugiswa komthaba, ganyenoktutugisawendawo zasemakaya. Lo umtetoko togo Sala ukonile wutovigele nomanndela enganyana ayenapelele wutumthaba wezolimo utatwe oweye indaweni ezwe wenzu umsebenzi ongesuwa nokikiza ezolimo.
However, Sala is an old 1970 act that is administered by the national department only and as such does not conform to the constitutional requirements of cooperative governance where national, provincial and local spheres of government have a role to play. Further, it is only applicable to privately owned land which limits the Department of Agricultural Land Reform and Rural Development from protecting and controlling loss of high value agricultural land that is owned by the state, statutory bodies, communal land and land that is administered by traditional authorities through amakos.
Nomagunjaloge lo umteto otwa uSala njobawa paseso ngon 1970 usumdalaga kuulu, ngamo peto umnyango gotwa au hambisani nomtetosisegelo wo oksebenza kahulumeni ngobambi sana gazwe lonke wesfundaso ganyenoma spala. Ngakoge futi upinde usebenze emthabeni o opetwe abantu muntu ngasese nomama omuntu ngamunye o ongnigazu omthaba. Loko wenzu kutamanda omnyango wezolimo abema fishani. Wutunga vigeela, ugulashlega komthaba omushle wezogjala wuti ube ogahulumeni, nomama opatwe nyango ahulumeni nomama ube omthaba opetwe amakosi indaweni ezenga nyelo amakosi.
The Pedal Bill that brings the committee here today seeks to replace and address the shortcomings in Sala in order to curb loss of agricultural land in the country and to protect high value agricultural land from loss and degradation from non-agricultural uses by demarcating protected agricultural areas.
Ngako lo umtetos vivinyo oktuwa iPedal uleta ikomidila namthangi wutuzokulu mananti. Wuti asisi zeni si vigele si kukule, nomasi shinje. Loku ogushota kalumtetomdalabektuwa uSala. Wonakuzuku vigelege ugulashlega komthaba ti omushle wezogjala nomama wezolimo ezwe nlonke. Vigelege omthaba ovundile nononile. Wutunga lashegilo omthaba nomama ongalinyazwa. Wutusajenziswe ngazinto ezenga jali nomame ngakikizu gula. Wuti lezo indawo, zibegu galutwa nazinda o ze zolimo. Ngakoge lo umtetos vivinyo kapetal uzama wuti okthumanise gale wonke omthaba wezolimo wuti ma usajenziswe wuti ulime ukikiza.
The bill intends to harmonize the need for use of agricultural land for agricultural purposes and the need for non-agricultural uses such as land for human settlement and urban development in line with special planning by the various local authorities.
Lo umtetos vivinyo agoso mozwayo oktuwa iPedal. Office wuti okthumanise gale wuti omthaba ti ovundi layo wezolimo ausajenziswe wuti kikizu gula. Besu wuti isti ngoke sezinto ezenga kikizu gula njengazinlu wutikhalabantu nshampu oktutugiswa gamatolopa ma wusabensani ngokuthumana kwasozonke izin tlaga zikaahulumeni.
Central to the implementation of the bill, once signed into law, is cooperative governance where all spheres of government will have a role to play and provinces are expected to develop provincial agricultural sector plans. The bill has implications for local and provincial governments through the formal structures that will be established in the provinces and municipalities in particular, mandating them to perform certain functions in the legislations once signed into law. In this regard, the different spheres of government are expected to avail financial resources, administrative capacity, infrastructure and the necessary training for the implementation of the bill.
Umongo wowe tuluwa nomama wogwenzera kalumtetos vivinyo opaga inswayo oma usushitrellewa ba umtetu. Wuti obambi sana koahulumenzonge intlaga yagaahulumenzino umsebenzi mele zuwenzee gui fundaso. Wuti ifundaso zibeni indawo ezuke thlele gile oktutugiswa uezolimo. Lo umtetos vivinyo oktuwa iPedal uzo baghe nemtelela koahulumen basemakaya noahulumen wesfundaso ngokuti gube konahuhlelo oluhlile gile oluzohlelo kifundaso nagomaspala. Elba tsa ngoksobala, elba yala ngoksobala. Wutma benzinthe itile ezingangi, ezozisa zibe umteto ezohamsana nalumtetu. Ngakoke zonke intlaga yagaahulumen izlinde wutizabele izmali, zikipe izmali, ganyalo nabaze wongamela. Ganyalo nalongu shobolo sizo zotingega. Wuti kaka shege abasabenzu wuti lo umtetos vivinyo ufazege wenzake.
One of the most important mandates of parliament as represented by the portfolio committee is public participation, which is one of our important functions and it has a duty to involve the public in all its processes through various means. In the case of this bill, some stakeholders with an interest in the bill responded to advertised calls for inputs by the committee and have made written submissions to the committee for consideration.
Any inteballegileka kuli siyenza njenge parlamende okumana nempahati njongo basenzange. Wuti sizwe izinvozine. Spluma.
We are now going to proceed with our oral public hearings. But for those that have written submissions, please feel free to bring the written submissions to the secretariat on the table that they are seated on to our right side of the hall, which will be your left hand side of the hall.
Sizo bezeshtube gage, ogulalela izinvozala bafa funukuluma bata monde izinvozabo. Lababa ipalile pansi, siabonga loko mabakulaga kutbaze thule lapa ya ngawesogula kunehovis lapa ya balindelu wamogela zonke zethulo zenu ezipaliwe pansi.
Every speaker that will be making a submission will be given four minutes to make their submission and we will request that you state your name and surname clearly and also state if you support or reject the bill in its current form.
Sonko iskulume zokuluma la, sizonigezwa imzuzu emine wutise kulume. Silindele wutushika malako nesbongo, usho nogutusukapi usho nogutikona iintlangano oweyemele nomekunyazile nomama uzmelewen. Omusu shiloke iizatu zako, besu ushokuwiyavevuma nomama oyaktrita lo umtetos vivinyo na.
And for us that are here, present in the hall, I would request all of us to be as quiet as possible when people are making their oral submissions and also let us respect one another and ensure that we have a dignified sitting because we are live on parliament TV.
Tinasonge kesikorala, sindilindele wutige okuluma yosimshoni pesitule sitiwaga. Simsi kumpane akulume akete ngonga pazamisi, njoba njoba sikuluma ye siakoswa si vela ngamabona gude.
I will therefore take hands from my left hand side as the first group of people who want to make a submission and then I will come onto my right hand side. So can we have a show of hands on the left hand side?
So atrela ngthatisandla ngala esalne samsongale abafu nokpaula nokuluma baba paramisisandla.
Mama in the front, please come here.
Umase ngthetile besisa ngala umama ose ngasondela.
Baba at the back with the green jacket. Aunt Mama there at the back raising her hand.
Okislambe si tlaza nomama lapa ngimovo paramsa yoo.
Any other hands on the left hand side?
We subscribe to the idea of the protection of the economy and the protection of the land because economy emanates from land. The problem we're facing is labor tenants in the farms. Government is pushing a program that says every home must have one gardens. Those of us who are labor tenants in the farms can't practice that right because labor tenants can't have a garden in somebody else's farm which happens to be settlers that came to our land. We are the one doing all the farming. We are the one taking care of all the livestock, which shows that we do have the knowledge, the know-how and the ability, but we just don't have, you know, access. The biggest problem is that we can't do anything as labor tenants in those farms without getting a consent from the farm owner. Our biggest question is that how and when did they become owners of these farms? And okona, siyazukuti umgo tchole um intongubu kebe ngubwa abablas ajwi wangu seventeen hundred, wasukwa fakogo eighteen hundred. Besawatya maplas, mekumshaba wetmwa kama plas, mshokfili imeshi. Kyofunyaga ngesis kaduhumene, ngapega ngubwe konstushii. Ungas chelongo nineteen thirteen, ngoba nineteen thirteen. Yinto ya izo, omanga tata ngene tikapambate okrin. Nineteen oh six, koto akusulli umshla, kota besekuni wango nineteen nineteen thirteen. Nalosintisindiosofunas lungi iswe iparlemente. As far as we know, anything gained illegally by means of corruption, law should intervene and help us. Land theft in South Africa did not take place in nineteen thirteen. It took back, it took place way back in the sixteen hundreds and the seventeen hundreds. Don't tell us about nineteen thirteen. So our constitution should be able to respond to such and be able to help us. Another thing is this program called ESTA where me as the labor tenant all my life... We are not saying white people and farm owners should go. We are saying those of us working the farms should be accordingly appropriated a portion of land for us to work. Some farms that are located to claimants. Government should do the follow-up where the farming does take place. We have seen and we as labor tenants, we are crying out because we know how to work the land. Some farms will be allocated to some people and they are beginning to sell some sites. They are building some houses there, they are not doing the farming. Even some areas of, under the traditional authority, they are selling sites there. People are not encouraged to farm. We as farm, as labor tenants, we are working the land, we know how to work the land and we just need some assistance. We've made submissions on the land expropriation bill. We are not happy that our inputs were not considered or were not implemented because our position was let land be appropriated without compensation because nothing will be lost, the land will be there, the buildings will be there. We are there as the labor tenants, we will work the land. Thank you. I greet the table and I greet everybody in the house. I'm an old lady from Macon in a white city. We got gardens and we are farming. We are aging farming that community garden without fencing. Our community garden is surrounded by different homesteads. We cannot even sell of whatever we farm there, we only feed on the remains because chickens are feeding daily on our plantations. We were supported with the fence some time back, but the fence that was supported had got like bigger holes. You know, even small goats can make entry with ease. So chicken, goats are entering, they are finishing everything. At this point in time, we're even trying to put some woods to try to fix this hole. So we are basically asking for fencing now because fencing is our only source of livelihood. I mean farming is our only source of livelihood. I belong to a group called Miezane. I'm well aged now. Some of the points I may have left, but my colleagues should be able to cover. Let me just take the time now, the opportunity to say thank you. We were supported with the fence some time back, but the fence that was supported had got like bigger holes. You know, even small goats can make entry with ease. So chicken, goats are entering, they are finishing everything. At this point in time, we're even trying to put some woods to try to fix this hole. So we are basically asking for fencing now because fencing is our only source of livelihood. I mean farming is our only source of livelihood. I'm well aged now. Some of the points I may have left, but my colleagues should be able to cover. Let me just take the time now, the opportunity to say thank you. Greetings. I greet all the minister. I greet all the minister. Front and everybody in the hall. Let me first say that we were advised to first say we either support or reject the bill. The problem is how are we expected to support or reject something you don't understand clean? The problem is how are we expected to support or reject something you don't understand clean? We as the grassroots, people in the grassroots level, we are not given time to digest and make sense of whatever is submitted to us. When you talk of agricultural land in the true sense of South African context, all agricultural land is in the hands of white people, is privately owned. So when you say you want to protect agricultural land, we are scared, we are being cautioned as people who don't have land, that okay, are you trying to protect and ring fence white people's land? When you look at the contributions of this bill, I see organizations owned and led by white people, they've contributed towards this bill. So our question is that why are you coming to us? You've consulted white people's opinion, they've told you their points and their views. Why then are you coming to us? It's very embarrassing, it's a shame that parliament, you are here, you're elected by us and local representatives from municipalities are not even here. In parliament, there's a lot of things being discussed there that is not relevant to us, is not helping us as the landless people, as the poor people, as the black majority in this country. Thank you. My name is Vuman Ngobane from Mshwati representing an organization called Vuman Mbogodo. Our proposition as Kina Mbogodo is let government use a bottom-up approach vis-à-vis a top-down approach that is happening right now. Because right now you're taking all the decisions as parliament, taking all the contributions from top there, we at grass level, we got no contributions and our methods are not represented and registered. We as Kina Mbogodo, we therefore reject this bill by virtue of the reason that what land do we have? We don't have any agricultural land. Even the land we reside in is the land owned by white people. Those of us black people with some piece of land, they don't have the morale to work the land because the land that they have is not agricultural land, is not fit for agricultural production. We request that agricultural education be restored particularly in those schools in farms so that our young people will grow up knowing how to farm and knowing the importance of farming and agriculture in general. Thank you. May I take the opportunity to greet the leadership in front of us? The community and the leadership present today? I am from Watu in Mshwati municipality. I represent Flasa, an organization of labor tenants and farm dwellers in South Africa. We heard about the proposed bill where we invited to come and air our views whether we support or we reject. It's very difficult right now to register our position. Some of our colleagues have said it clearly in no unequivocal terms that you cannot support something you don't have. Right now here in Mshwati municipality, there is an RTP program running in farms. Ever since the RTP program was launched by former president Nelson Mandela, in the farms, not even a single farm dweller has ever received or seen that RTP house erected in those farms. In fact, what is happening is that our local municipalities work in cahoots with farmers, with farm owners to allocate some distant far land, far from everywhere, to say build RTP houses there, let people be moved from farms and be lost in that lost city. People, farm dwellers or labor tenants in farms, their livestock is taken away by force? We are therefore saying let government respond to labor tenants and farm dwellers in those farms. Make sure that those people get some land. Then we can start discussing about agricultural land use and all the likes. From nineteen ninety-eight, we lodged claims as labor tenants to say we are working the land, we are taking the land, return the land to us. Today is twenty twenty-three, the question still remains, where is the land that we claimed? And twenty twenty-four, you're expecting us to vote? Thank you. Greetings. I greet the parliament. And I greet everybody else in the house. I come from Mshwati. In a farm belonging to, or called Benty Fairview Farm. I was born and bred in this farm, I'm now fifty-three years old. From the sixties, our families were in this farm. We have suffered a lot in this farm. What I would like to ask is that as a farm dweller, don't I have any right? I'm happy to see parliament, but I have a lot of pain in my heart. What I would like to ask the parliament, we see you every now and again. You come and you tell us to vote. What I want to know, what is it that you want us to vote for? They don't, they don't have any solution, they don't give us any solution. But when it's time to vote, they are calvinizing everybody to come and vote. I have even joined farm workers organization and I'm going to give my all towards that organization because we are suffering there. We have some houses, some four-room houses we live in. You know, there is leakage in those houses and we can't find any help from anywhere. I have even joined farm workers organization and I'm going to give my all towards that organization because we are suffering there. We have some houses, some four-room houses we live in. You know, there is leakage in those houses and we can't find any help from anywhere. Oba omlungu akona ikela washiumfana wati inda osago wesel. Wabuzu ukesa osfagelile ngani na wangabina impedule nganuzoshona wasalumfana umfana uyimange ufagin contract. Sisalele makaya stilizi msabenzin miyagisona okula ababa yebatilizi. Omsebenzi ngayskuazukutsheshusolimange ngikulagengwa azukutikuyele msabenzin ngengokutigobangsa kulangsektawote. Enkikubuzayo oku ukutige nizogwazi ni dyacshongonyago zasukutniwazi lukuzosmela gude la plaz. Ama kantela oke asefigile ataswa votele ANC, ayam sabumlungu. In the farm that I come from, the original owner passed on and handed over the farm to his son. His son is not farming, he has given the farm to contractors. We are still in the farm, we can't do anything. And the councillors keep coming for us to vote them into office. And all of them, ANC councillors that come, that we have voted in the past, they are so scared of the farm owner. Savuga excellent ngofo sahamba sawongamelumlungu sangwenlagua akwasbizela ama police. Masfiga umlungutsin de kantela galas. Oma sifirumlungu si kantela galas sa masata siso gila thelu kes. The houses that we stay in don't have electricity. So we went to the farmhouse by four AM in the morning, all of us gathered by his house. There is electricity there, there is no electricity in our homes. So he called on police to pounce on us. And the councillor that responded and came, the farm owner said, I don't know, I don't even know this councillor. Enkikubuzayo ukutu onga ma kantela figa yata afige angene katulena babekona ayaku beka. Njongobagati sasvota agigla ma kantela igu opoku beka elfigilelishan konagwenzaga ngoba wenzega lukut. What we want to know, since councillors have been changing office coming now and again, we just wanna know, is there any continuity? The next councillor, does he know what was done before? And do they work on the developments of the foundation? Bestrela rejenke parlamende njongobangshesngisho ukutikatengfisa. Ngifisukiti ma gizen gene kulabatshoye wana ba petumshaba. Ngoba majema sasitisiapega lababatba petumshaba basisingalut. We're happy to see parliament, I felt like running coming here to meet you all. So that I can hear to you, those of you in power. Because the ones that we are staying with there and the elected officials that we have have got no solutions for us and not hearing us. Begate sitela agi parlamende guleli plaz laga Bendris Fairview Farm sitela ama taitela. We are then asking the parliament that those of us living in this farm called Benty Fairview Farm, we ask you to help us with tightly deeds also. Begatela genje njongobangi tisala gela plaz sifuna ogu isi zangenga nze. Ukutisi kulisoba mjengamige njemina ngsebenzi ngisaleka ya nomtana oholu five hundred angiholi impeshe. Impeshe nomwazutshoye funa yaguitsholema okula. For, I'm no longer working due to health reasons. I'm staying with my child that gets about a five-hundred-rupees grant. That is the only income coming to our household. I can't even get any grant from government because you don't get any grant because of sickness in this country. Ikalozam segisabenzileka kulugabinga parangenzayonkin. I have written to everywhere stating my case. Enkikela njogogo gita lagulela plaz nomlungu opopopasbayamsonela utukumange apulinda abameli bak. Ogu ibona abasomkunumela ayena. The current farm owner says he won't comment on any about that farm. He starts waiting on his legal advisors or law firm to speak on his behalf. Enkikulumilege minage weekend de kantela ngati weabana mosasopindubuyu zela ungasuzonsa sokshai. Ngoba felenthwe zela la iku. I warned the councillor last week that came to us that next time you set your foot here, we will actually deal with you, we'll beat you up because you seem not to know what you are doing. Bestrela genisi zeg na tu kanda kanda sina osi ilimele sikuazufu eksens pegelinganze tuhambe zeskolin. Help us with the tractor so that we can also farm the land and produce and be able to sustain and take care of our own children and send them to school like everybody. Asana awamans. We don't have water? Swathola ganyenge so. You get water delivered only once per week, sir Bongo. Yabongalama. Thank you. Stalika malakoma. Stalika malakoma. Omalo yoshalapanza stalika malak. Mama sondelusipika mama, kama nesbon. Upilisi wenzama? I am pilisi wenzama. Ikama lami nguzo kalanga. I'll start with my name. Malane. Malandela. Malane, M-A-L-A-N-E, Kumalo. Malani? Ne. Oh, Malane Kumalo. Kandu ayino yahuwazi. Malane Kumalo. Yebo, ngisuka la Empolweni. I am from Empolweni. Kotu angingapansu wintanga no emela bassebenzi basema plazin isia ingo. I am part of an organization representing farm workers, it's called Siangoba. Besen ngibingelela i kulugahulmeninge nababo onka bandaba koneholo. I greet all the officials of government and everybody else in the hall. Gizosho inda bemenzengala utingenzekisito. I'll start, I'll give my talk a caption. Ukuti bo onkelabanta basekundlin. Nabake balshupega bayangapandle. Ageko asusizi njenkumundosa lelue wakula eplazin. I'm saying all those of you in positions now and those of you that even went to exile, you have no idea of the pain like those of us born in the farms. Ubussebenze plazin. We would work the farms. Magutuholelu, holelu. Magutunga holelu, unga holelu. If they choose to pay you, they pay you. If they choose not, you get nothing. Magutishaewa, ushaya wendi wintenge ilut. If they wanna beat you up, they beat you up as they please. You are just a piece of nothing. Kotu reglo konkatris. Ay bo kabilungu maplasin. May I state this categorically clear, not all farm owners were like that. Lemte tetsha ulumeni. These laws that government pass. Siyizo. We hear. Sizuti siyamuge ngoba i kuveltesu. I would say we support because we are powerless here, there's nothing we can do. Siyafunzwa ngendo uyaitanda auitanda. You are actually spoon-feeding us whether we like it or not, you are giving it anyway. Imte tokahulmengeti ayissebenzi iskatesning. You see, the laws of government don't work for us most of the time. Sebekhulme laba fui to note that they were to omshab. My colleagues have expressed their views on the land question. Lay maplasin. In the farms? Ay ukuti ma ukulumanabantu basemklamukulumankumundu afiga wazofu nomsebenzi. Abantu abafiku abithale emshabingatiko. Bashaya wa basusuwa na kokela wanda onye ukutwebiela namatuna senosa. Sekfane ngusukela ngambi ngklambi two, three, four, five kilometers. Ngietuneni ligababa nomaligamkogu nomagakoko elila ekregin. In the farms, the farms that we're talking about, we're not talking about people who came job hunting or job seeking into those farms. We're talking about people who were born and bred, living in the land with evidence of graves in those farms. Then those people were evicted and put somewhere else far away. You have to move like five kilometers to visit your father's or your grandfather's grave. Mvagalo okoge ngesa tu eitile ukoshwe plazin. Sometimes for some reason you get chased or evicted from the farm. Ukutusebenzi iskatesaga nani ukoshwinyangi pelile ukoshwe kunjani lezinho azakela wena zona. Wenzegengejani ubukoshwenjenke ngengejange nganjani abanyi bagilatemkuakoi. When they chase you out of the farm, your service, the duration, the number of years you worked, whether you were chased on a month end, whether you have buildings erected in the farm, all those things don't matter. You are chased literally like a dog. Sometimes they drop you by the roadside. Iskatesning bebekbeka. Hey, ipshungu debasitplazin. It's very painful what's going on in those farms. Ukula eskolin uyaguazu eskolu ye upale ngklambi unzukina senbu sasebukwazupali kutu eingoati. Ngishimnyaga enonias ujelumlungu myaga ngoba uyakulisa nganongo bufunukuti uzossebenzi plazin. Utolutumna nonntanga inabago inda bafundo standa twantina tu wanasektwa uzossebenzi. Uzolusingoma uzogwenzani ahoholi lutu. Two sebenzeli plaz. We were raised as laypatenants in the farm. Even our years, we never knew. The farm owner will decide how old you are. And when you go to school, when they choose to let you to go to school, they check whether you can write. If you can read or write, you are then absorbed to the farm. You are fit enough to work in the farm irrespective of your age. Your peers could be going ahead with schooling, that doesn't matter. You are now ready to work the farm for free of charge. Oma ukusosebenzile uze lamukulu uswapeluksebenzu wemdal ukoshwe. Awukoshala nobala ngklambi indengejani usuyakoshwa ukutusebenzi hundred years, how many years? Aksholo tuposhisa kwengejani tatalalelo panjani lakuhamba masefaneli ubuyape. Uze la impandenzako tinabantu ihimpandese tu ilus. Sikuluma ngoba no baba mku eh ilentian kasu. After you've worked all your life, you're born in this farm, you are forced to work, you work all your life until you are well-aged. And for some reason, whatever reason that comes to mind at the time, they chase you away of the farm, they evict you out of your farm. You even want to go back, we as people, African people, we go back to our roots. Our roots are our ancestors. You want to talk to our ancestors, you can't because you are... This is very painful and it's irritating to me. Ausagwazi kungenalapa. You are not... Ausavumeliki lewenu ngene plazin. You are not allowed to go to the gravesites of your own family. You are barred to come to the farm. Kotu akone ngakeli kukpinda. May I also repeat this, let me reiterate. Abanyabelu askulmeni klenyesosanga atmasisisto tubasiskambancha. Let's tell the gospel truth. Bakona abelu aban ubuntu. Some white farmers have ubuntu. Kotabamba. In other words, humanity. There are very few, very limited. Uhlmenusha umthetu. Ukuti abalime amatuna etu uzoti ngabaskoke. Kati wabakona kotaku konabawa lime usukona. Mounty akuluma na ati omunyo atigimi myself wati ngizelu melmina. Ngambuzo ngatumelozosincha imte to yesoze shintetuka ulmeni. Wati ngeku ngjeluelo kongu ukuluma ninkantolo ngoba ninavela nilut. Engjela ngengegeto sasinabani. Government passed law that said all farmers or white farmers that farmed the graveyards or grave sites of people should compensate. That is the law passed by government. And I went to the farm owner who farmed our grave. And I asked him, I took him to task about that. He said, you are just nothing and I won't talk to you, I won't answer to you. My son is a lawyer, he will respond to government when they challenge me. Githe masiti usasgotama tunetu amatunase magitalapi wati hambani neoboni. Safiga gliniwa onke na wabanabanyaya wagiti kupela onke kwatu iste unendao asibi. Nomengasbilesasazigutaslinya ngoba zina matuna band. Sir Bongo. Kotu ayena? I asked him, do you even know where our graveyards are? He said, I don't know, go and check. Sir Bongo. His father though had some protected areas designated as cemeteries that would be fenced because the graves of the people will be there. So... Manje nginumbuso enkubusa yo ey kulwenis gahulmeni ukuti. Yabona ngengevelangsa ngani ukuti. Wa akushuktine ukuti izwe selpetwa abantaba nyama sine lungu lolo kuvota. Oma sivote nte ngasisi ngoba asisa gani abanyabelu ngubatek bandu bavo. Ngiyazukutingonile ngalima matuneni astalainpansi manina maning. Abanyabate ningfungulele wanjani. Kuraitlo ngoba beikulmele ngomumutle. Sir Bongo. Kotu abanyaba funi ngoba asilutu. Some white people have negotiated and discussed settlements with some of the farm workers that they have farmed their graves. And they are willing to pay with some discounts and stuff. But some are not willing because they consider us as nothing. Greetings to all our honorable representatives from parliament. Okulumayo umbongeni wagaskakane. I am umbongeni skakane. Ngikamuka winlangano yabalimi i African Farmers Association of South Africa. I'm from African Farmers Association of South Africa organization. Weabonake masi zo kulumanke ndo etinda omshaba singakuluma kuzegusa. When we discuss anything that has got to do with land, we'll discuss until sunshine, until the morning. Ngoba njenkoba sila intlinje ini ngiletu alina yolendo ektiwa ama taitela. Truth of the matter, most of us in this room don't have this thing called a tightly deed. But oma ubuga ama stakeholders alistuela. Ama stakeholders anobnigasbomshaba ana mataitela. And then if you look at the consulted stakeholders, all of them are the rightful owners of land with proof of tightly deeds. Yini ndesitrela yo lakwazulu natali. Siti omshaba okona aubuiselu emakosi. The only thing, one thing we ask here in KZT is that the land that is there must be returned back to Amakosi. Amakosi ayogwazi ukwabela abantu abashala enda wenzabo ama umshab. Amakosi would be able to allocate land for people resident in those traditional areas. Ngoba utolu ukutikunabelu ngaba konabashelila ba petamatitela. Kunekampane inkulu ezchale amasati zipetamatitela. Eminyayale emshaba ingapansu amakosi ya kwamando. We have white people here staying in some lands. They've got proof of tightly deeds. We've got companies here planting trees and forests everywhere. They've got tightly deeds. And most of this land that they claim to have, they took it by force. Sititi nanjenga bashali abashala enda wenzamakosi. Njengoba niko na niku lunkamge parlamende. Askale nislingani swekala sonke i South Africa ngabibiku muntu opete itaitela. My submission is that to you from parliament, if you want to solve this land question, we'll have to start by on the same level where no one should be claiming to possess a tightly deed. Denige mvagalo resesalage. Ukutige mshawumbe manisa nizo obusu ukutikfane lidivelopera njani emshaba. Inkulumoyitu yobisi kala lapongoba. La wazulu natali konabana mataitela konabana mapito. You see, when you want our contributions on land development, we should be on the same level where no one is claiming to have a tightly deed. Because in KZT, we've got two groups. We've got people with tightly deeds and people with the PTO's right to use. We live in Taipan areas and there's a big influx of people living in the cities, the urban areas. Back to the Taipan lands now. There's a big influx. And the land is getting limited. We are asking government that the land that they own as government, let government make that land available to us for us to farm and move into real agriculture. We have discovered that some of the privately owned agricultural land in South Africa, the owners are somewhere abroad, somewhere overseas. We as people in KZT are dealing with poverty on daily basis because we know that agriculture is a business and we want to delve into that. Thank you so much.
Let us thank all the speakers that were able to make their oral submissions. It is important to note, though, that in these public hearings, we did say those that wish to make written submissions can be able to do so to the portfolio committee. And those that are in the state of readiness and are able and willing to make oral submissions can be able to do so in this session. So if you still need time to peruse through the bill and look into the details of it, you may so do so. And then write to the committee and make your written submissions as we still have two provinces to visit, that being the Eastern Cape and finally the Western Cape. I also need to state to you that we are in a parliament sitting as the portfolio committee on agricultural land reform and rural development. So as honorable members of parliament, we did not disclose what parties we come from and therefore are not asking for any votes from the people of Mkungundro. And I can assure you, even in next year's election, you won't see on the ballot paper the logo of parliament and parliament contesting elections. So let us be here and engage in the business of the day that is on the public hearings on the preservation and development of agricultural land bill. We have also made mention that we have officials of the Department of Agriculture, Land Reform and Rural Development present here with us from the province as well as national who will be afforded an opportunity to respond directly to the matters that you have raised in this session. Unfortunately, those that you have elected have not showed up to honor this meeting so that you can be able to raise your concerns with them directly to the municipal council. So we'll now take another second round of hands for those who still wish to speak on the bill or speak on issues and concerns you may have regarding the progress of the Department of Agriculture and Reform and Rural Development. We'll take hands from this side of the house. The gentleman at the back with the white paper. There's a lady at the back with the glasses. There's a gentleman with a gray jersey. Please come forward. There's a lady with a duke here. Please come forward in front of the camera. Yes, yes. There's a gentleman in the front here, the blue jersey. There's a lady with a black and white duke. Is your hand up? Yes, please come. There's another hand at the back of a gentleman with the white hat. Any other hand on this side? There's a gentleman here with the navy blue jacket, please. Yes. Let me remind you again to state your name clearly and surname and the affiliation you come from. Are there any more hands that would like to speak? Four, five, six, seven, eight. Is that all the remaining hands that wish to speak? Okay, we'll take the last round of hands after this group has spoken. That is the last group of hands. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of another colleague of ours in parliament, Honorable Dex. We see you in our presence and you are most welcome in these public hearings on the preservation and development of agricultural land bill. Let us proceed.
May I greet all the honoreables in front at your positions respectively? My name is Spiwe Emia. I come from Umsundusi Stock Association. I would love to inform the portfolio committee that you need to be careful because I don't want us to come into conflicts with one another on things that should be solved easily. There's an animal that was created by our Lord called a zebra. A zebra was given two beautiful colors, black and white, by God. That simply means that there is no white person or black person that should preside over the other. There's just one simple, very short version that I wish to remind you of. Standing before you here, as you see me, I am about seventy years old. I'm coming from the mine. That's exactly where I'm coming from. I worked for years in the mining industry. However, did not have an identity document. I was working, using a paper in the form of an envelope. If I stayed same today to certain people, they say to me, "Uh-uh, that is not written in any form of document." Now let me move to the exact point that I wanted to make. In 2005, we were retrenched at Telkom and it was so removed in the railways in which we were working. We informed that you need to proceed or relocate to rural areas to form organizations. We formed those organizations in form of associations, the one that I'm actually presiding over. There is no assistance, however, from the part of the government. There's nothing so far. As you've noticed, that before us here today, there is not even any official that's presiding over this session. It means, or rather, it simply means that our opinions are not on the same page. I plead with the parliament or the portfolio committee before us to look at the example that I've made when I started my speech here about the zebra, the two colors that appears on the zebra. The white color should not be prioritized over the other. Municipalities that are presiding over rural people are not in line or rather in order. So we're pleading with the portfolio committee or the government to ensure that these municipalities are made to function in an orderly fashion. We thank you. I greet the portfolio committee. It's Mangitizuma and I'm coming from a place called Makongo. And the traditional place under Inkosi Umapumulo. I come from an organization called Machiguchugu, which is an organization presided over by women. When this organization was established, we were encouraged to ensure that we farm so that we can make a living as women. Due to the fact that we don't have proper portions of land to use, it is now forcing us to go and seek portions of lands in halls so that at least they can lend us or lease us some portions of land that you can use to farm. We did proceed to the halls that were mentioned to us by councillors to use. However, we faced quite a number of difficulties when we tried to use the portions of land around the said halls because we don't have authority since people around the community itself would, from time to time, visit the said places and enter willingly and when they pleased us to do so. And then at some point, they would take even the material or rather the resources that we use such as nets and then they would destroy same and then they will take them for their own usages. I work with Mam Maduna and Mam Nlala also in this organization of ours called Machiguchugu. What we are pleading before the portfolio committee before us here is that at least we be assisted with the resources and material that can at least enable us to work the land that we have. Even though it's not enough, it's not adequate for us to produce the amount of food or rather crops that we intend to produce. However, the assistance will be very much appreciated on our part to ensure that at least we have resources such as tractors and other plowing material that we can use to ensure that our produce, at least, or rather the yield, at least is being multiplied as intended. As was already explained before us here by some of the speakers, that some of the land that was given to us, bushes has emanated in those places, trees has grown, and it's no longer conducive for us to use as a farm. So we are pleading to government and to the portfolio committee before us here to ensure that you assist us in terms of ensuring that you are able again to use that particular land for farming purposes. Thank you. Greetings. My name is Tembingosi Mbata. I come from Windy Hill. Huge problem we are facing when it comes to the question of the land, or rather, the land question is that the land that we are talking about here was taken by people from Germany during those ancient years. When those Germans came to our land, it was not like those lands, or rather, those portions of lands were not presided over by humans, or it was not inhabited. But there were people there when they came. So, but what happened is this, that they dispossessed people who owned the land, and then those people were removed, or rather, pushed into places that were no longer conducive for people to settle there. So there were laws that were put in place in those farms in which we were staying. And those laws were very harsh to us because you would find that, for example, we've got kids. Now, if there's anything that happened amongst the kids when they were playing outside a quarrel of a certain and kind, you would find that you now, as a parent, you are involved, and then they would ensure that they, rather, expel you, will push you away from the farm on the basis that kids did not agree, or they were disagreeing on certain things. People owned their land, so what happened is that these people who came at a certain point, they started now to build a place that looked like a village. So people were removed, or rather, were moved in the places where they initially were staying before, and then they were told to go and stay in this particular village now. However, this village, there was a problem with it because now you are, it's like it's fenced. So there's nothing there to produce. This is not a place that we can say is conducive for farming practices. What we are pleading with the portfolio committee before us is that at least we be allowed, that we are able to use the land in question. The land must be returned to the rightful owners. Because this land was looted. Thank you very much. I greet the officials before us and all the colleagues that I came with today. My name is Mavis Ntunu and I come from Wat Five, a place called Enati. I represent a club called Gangobeni Club, and my concern brought me here today is has to do with farming. The club I'm referring to is quite an old club, more than forty years of existence in the said area. However, we're facing quite a number of challenges and difficulties because the Wat Hogs, they are actually accessing the farm due to the fact that the fencing is no longer in good condition. As a result, they are able to enter the farm and destroy whatever that we are trying to farm there. We have trouble with these Wat Hogs because when they gain access to the place where we are farming, and they mess up with our potatoes there. So we can't harvest anything because all that we have been trying to crop there, or rather, to plant, or to farm, gets destroyed by these Wat Hogs. And the other thing is that we don't have access to water. So irrigation becomes a problem because when we need to get access to water, we need to go to a place a bit far from where we are actually practicing our farming. And also that place isn't very much conducive to us because we are sharing the said place with cattle. Sometimes you'll find that the place, the water, is not enough even to use because cattle, if you, if you come after a head of cattle that has been there, you'll find that water is no longer conducive for usage. It's very difficult dealing with the animals that are actually destroying the place in which we are practicing our farming. I've mentioned already how the Wat Hogs are destroying the area and destroying the crops that we are trying to grow in that particular vicinity. And also, it gives access to cattle because now we become shepherds, where we have to now leave everything else to ensure that we look after the cattle so that they don't enter and destroy whatever we are trying to plant there. And also, we need assistance with the fence from the government. That's what we may, we want to request, that at least if we can be assisted with the fencing so that at least we can prevent the cattle and the Wat Hogs from entering the place there. And also water, because we are finding it very difficult to access water to use for irrigation purposes. We need assistance also with, rather, resources or materials that can be used in a form of, rather, in a form of pumps that can at least make sure that water gains access from the dam to the place where we are planting. It is helping us because it needs to be taken into account that our young ones are not employed. So this farming is really a means for us to ensure that we support ourselves and we support our families. So if it is being destroyed, we are finding it difficult now to make a means because we don't know what to do next. We are finding it's very difficult now to deal with the situation where our plants are being destroyed. We spent a lot trying to go to shop to buy the equipment that we use to ensure that our crops are properly grown. So it is quite expensive now. If you find that the crops are destroyed and there's nothing to harvest, it is very painful. Thank you. I greet you all in front of us as our officials. My name is Magagum Kise from Umsuati. I come from an organization called Siamoba. We are pleading before the portfolio committee here that they need to take account in terms of the treatment. We need to register before the portfolio committee that the treatment that you get from the farms, it's quite bad. We are pleading with the portfolio committee and government to intervene in trying to assist because we are finding it very difficult to even farm the portions of land that we have amongst ourselves in these farms that we are occupying. Because whatever that you do in those farms seems to be prohibited by the owners of these farms. So you can't even plant a set of cabbages, even in a minimal portion of land. Because whatever that you do, you are told you are not allowed to do that in a certain area, and then you are prohibited from doing it. So they put tractors from left to right at the front and also at the back of the vicinity that you are trying to use. That makes it very difficult for us to extend our yield. And also, they put poisonous waters that gets to affect our crops. It's very much not conducive to do anything, simply because you would find that even the spaces that were allocated to us, they enter those spaces and do whatever they please. For example, they will plant, they will plant trees even next to the yard. They will put sugar cane next to the yard, or even inside the yard, and they will use their cars willingly as and when they pleased to do so, and hurting even the chickens in the process. The land we are talking about is the land that was occupied before the white people came into these places, or rather, into these farms. However, we are finding it very difficult now when we are trying to make, or rather, to reach common ground with them because they don't seem to understand that this is the land that belongs to our forefathers. We, as I'm standing before you here, I have at least about eight children. So, but we are living in a four-roomed house. It is very unconducive. If I can ask a question is to say, how can I live with eight kids in a four-roomed house setting? But when you try to extend this house and build, say, another house next to it, you are not even allowed to do that. They send certain individuals, or rather, certain people, to come and destroy that house, which then forces you to go back to the same, a smaller house that you were trying to extend, which is very much not in line with how people should live. It makes no human dignity in the sense that they are treating us. We plead with government and also the portfolio committee before us here to ensure that we get assistance in terms of the ill treatment that we receive, or rather, get from the farms in which we are residing in because we do understand that it's very difficult for someone who has never resided in a farm to understand the kind of treatment that you're actually referring to that is attributed to us by farmer owners. It is very inhumane. There is no way we can tolerate such a type of a treatment. But however, what we are asking from the portfolio committee and government is that you intervene in trying to make sure that at least the environment is conducive for us, the environment is conducive for our children to be able to at least make a living and we can bring them up in a proper and a dignified manner, even in, even in the farms that we are living in. We are asking that intervention be made, and the intervention should at least be seen to be done. We ask that the land of the people should be returned to the rightful owners, which are the natives. And this thing of residing in these farms where you are controlled and you are told what to do, when, how, and where, is not what any human being would like to be, is not a conducive environment for any human being. So we are asking government to ensure that you speed up the process of ensuring that land is returned to people so that at least we can have land that we can use freely to do whatever that we need to do in that land without being controlled by the farmer owners. Thank you. I greet the officials before us and I greet the community members before us here. I'm a ward committee and I'm looking after the agricultural activities in the area. It is very difficult to make contributions concerning this proposed agricultural bill because we know that after we've spoken, or rather, after we've engaged the portfolio committee or government on bills of this nature, there is no follow-up after that. on bills of this nature, there is no follow-up after that. People whom we reside with in our areas, they really need assistance. They really need assistance from government. Because in 2002, in Wat Five, where I'm actually staying, there are certain places that were fenced in those particular places. But the understanding is that even those places that were fenced there and the people who actually reside over those places, there is no proper monitoring from the part of the government to actually know that these people are operating in this fashion and in this way and who's doing what, when, where and how. So you find that even people, they end up fighting amongst themselves over small issues that it would be easy if there are people with a proper interventions to assist and help those people to do things properly in those farms. It will really assist from the part of government. We are happy the portfolio committee is here because the intervention will really assist. Because you find that people amongst themselves or rather if they are left on their own devices and no one is actually assisting them and giving them the know-how and also guiding the progress and the projects that they are running, they end up being in conflict with one another for no specific or rather important reason. Because the issue will be that they don't really understand what needs to be done, where, how and when. Because they are not actually best in terms of the processes that are supposed to be engaged with. We shouldn't forget that in areas we were coming from, our people are heavily divided. And as a result, they cannot work together even in a smaller project to ensure that at least they achieve unity in whatever that they do. So the intervention on the part of government in ensuring that at least people are united on the ground will yield a massive achievement when it comes to them being able to be productive and ensuring that whatever they do is successful. We are pleading with the portfolio committee and government to ensure that at least whatever that you bring to us here, you ensure that you follow up on everything that you promised to us and you do monitoring properly. You should not just bring up us here into these buildings and then after that, nothing is done. Thank you very much. I greet you on the table in front of us. I greet everyone with us here in this hall. My name is Tembegile Zondi. I come from an organization called Siamoba. At Umswati. It's very painful on my part what I'm going to register here before the portfolio committee because I was born in a farm also I come from a specific farm. I grew up in a farm. And in a farm where I grew up, it was very difficult because I used to experience things like my mother being beaten up and sometimes they were chased out of the said farm for no reason during the times when they were working there very, very hard. And today, we are the ones now who are enduring the same pain or suffering the same fate as our mothers were. I've worked for a very, very long time in farms. However, I have not enjoyed any peace ever since I started working in that particular farm. And there were no proper incentives, so to speak, that I can put my finger on to say that this is what I've achieved in working for those particular farms. And I would like also to say that I do have some chickens that I own in the vicinity. And also there is a portion of land that I'm using for agricultural purposes. However, there is an abuse that is going on as we speak. The employer whom I'm residing, I'm living in the farm that is owned by, is very abusive towards me because even the crops or the plants that I have there, it's very difficult for me to get any proper yield because the land portion is very minimal. I can't do what I intend to do. And the abuse is unbearable. I don't think there is any freedom that I can say I got. We live in a very small house and I have four children of my own. And I have about three grandchildren that I also reside with. Now, the problem is that the house is quite small, relatively small, and we can't all of us be residing in that house. Water also is an issue, another problem for us because we were not given access to water that is around or rather found in that particular farm. And also the yard that we were actually occupying, it's quite unconducive because you are told which portion of the yard to use and which portion of the yard not to use. So you find yourself in a very difficult space. I'd like to plead with government, with the portfolio committee, to at least speak with government on our behalf to ensure that at least our given land that we can own, so to ensure that whatever that we plough, whatever produce that we are able to make in those farms or rather in those places that we'll be owning, we'll be able to provide for our families, we will be able to provide for our young ones to ensure that they prosper. And also the education that they're receiving is not the type of education that we say, would say that is proper education. So we are saying that government should intervene in ensuring that the education received by our children at least is the one that will help and enhance their future. Thank you very much. Greetings everyone in the house. I am Tembeso Nzakka and I come from a place called Imbali at Bibi. We appreciate that parliament is here today, even though it's not something that's normal. We feel a bit shaky since we are seeing parliament here, but I think we are welcoming that. I am a member of Umsundusi Livestock Association. We have demarcated a portion of land and fenced that portion of land to use for cattle. However, I find it very difficult to run that particular land because now the issues that we are actually facing is that the type or the quality of grass that is found in that particular land is not conducive to be consumed by our livestock. Now, we are actually seeking assistance from the part of government to ensure that at least they help us, they come close in ensuring that they assist us in terms of giving us a proper resource that you can use and also to assist us to be able to run the said place to ensure that the livestock that we are trying to grow, that the livestock that we are trying to produce there comes to prosperity. It's an area where I come from, I am a deep assistant. So we are actually pleading with government to ensure that we get assistance in terms of ensuring that our livestock flourishes because we know that the white people or rather the white government assisted their own people in ensuring that they flourish in whatever that they were doing in all the businesses that they were involved in. But our black government, we are finding it very difficult to deal with them or rather to have or rather to get assistance from their part. It doesn't seem that they are willing to help or rather to assist us as people who are black and residing in these farms. Because we have reported many cases before to say that our livestock is being stolen, there is actually stock theft that is thriving in those places. However, there is no intervention that we may put our finger on to say that this is what government has done to assist us. We know very well that since we are heading to elections next year, we are going to then see some of the officials coming to us conversing vote. But we want to say to this government that if you don't give us or rather assist us with the things that we are asking the government to assist us with, we are going to really defy in terms of going to vote for the government. We also plead with the portfolio committee to ensure that the governments gets to understand that since we are people who own livestock, board signs will really assist us in ensuring that our livestock is safe. We don't find our cows being ran over or hit by cars on our roads because people who are driving in those particular roads are unaware that there is livestock roaming around those roads. So board signs that will make it clear that there is livestock around those places will really be of assistance to us. Thank you very much. I'd like to greet all the officials before us, our portfolio committee and everyone in the house. And also I'd like to greet Mr Lameni, whom I used to see as someone with energy doing everything and getting everything done. I think now he's became an ambassador. I'm not sure if what he used to do is able to do now or not. Tumsani Mbele. I started with my name when I started speaking. We don't have the land. That is the main issue that we are actually facing. The land is a problem because even those vicines or other places that were demarcated solidly for our cattle, we can't now have those pieces of land because even people coming from outside our country. We are actually adhering to the call that says it is advisable for us to keep livestock and also to engage in farming activities. However, we are finding it difficult to engage in such or to do such activities because we don't have the land or rather the places where we can actually practice what we are being told to practice. The problem we are facing is that the government passes laws. However, they don't monitor those laws. They don't ensure that those laws are being put and monitored and ensured that they are functioning in a manner that they were set initially to function and serve the purposes that they were meant to serve. Now, the problem is that you would find that in our communities, there are people who are doing piggery or rather involved in piggery. However, if you take your own produce and try to take it to the market, you will be told or rather the pricing will be determined by the buyer, the ones who are going to tell you that no, we are going to pay you this much on the basis that you are a black farmer. However, if you have connections or rather a friend who's white, if you take the same product and use that particular individual who's white, you will come with a different pricing there which is higher than the one that you will get when you go to the market to sell on your own as a black farmer, which is a very big problem for us. One other issue or rather one other aspect I would like to touch on is the one that deals with the farms. deals with the farms. The farms that government will buy on behalf of the locals or rather than the people who are residing on those farms which are black people. So, you'll find that when these black people are in positions of these farms, the government will then recall that white farmer who was, or rather, owning the farm before and that person will be called back to mentor people who are living or rather who are residing over that farm which is the black constituency. Now, we will find that these people instead of mentoring this black constituency, they abuse them, they don't give them what they were intended by the government to ensure that they give to them. We are pleading with government to at least have another purpose that this money can be used for because my understanding is this, if the money is taken by government to buy a farm and now you find that a farm is bought, but the person who was owning the farm is then brought back again to the same farm, it doesn't make sense because it simply means that the farm is bought, but the ownership is not changed. Now, this simply means that the money that was used, there cannot be any proper explanation to what is exactly it was being used for because the owner of the farm has not left. So, maybe this money can be used for something else that will benefit the community or the locals of that particular vicinity. One last aspect I would like to register with the Portfolio Committee has to do with the fact that some owners of the land that we are actually talking about here are not even in this country of ours called South Africa, they are overseas, they are enjoying their lives there and don't even know or they're not even aware what is happening in these farms. Instead, what the government should be doing, they should be taking these farms and hand them over to the locals or rather the people who are residing in those farms for them to use them in a manner in which will be conducive and also in a manner in which will assist the locals to flourish in those farms. Thank you very much.
Thank you for our people that have made their submissions on this second round of public hearings on the preservation and development of agricultural land. I did see that there was a last round of hands that were still remaining, so we will take our last round of hands for those that still wish to make their input. I must state that for all those that have been raising issues, we did say that the officials of the department are here with us, they will respond directly to the issues you have raised regarding the programs of the department. Many of you have also raised the issue of what will happen from today going forward. Is this just a talk show and passing just time? We can assure you that we are not here to pass time, the officials of the department having responded to your issues will give their cellphone numbers and their email addresses, including the PA of the minister, so that you can be able to take the issues directly with them. If the officials at the local level in the district municipality and the municipality have not responded adequately, you can take that to the provincial office and also you can elevate that to the minister's office. Having failed to be satisfied, the portfolio committee is there to assist in getting the responses that you require. We will also give the details of our secretariat so that you can be able to write directly to the committee. Let us take the last round of hands. There's a gentleman, Ummama here with the duke, please come forward. The other lady with the, yes, please come forward. Can the elderly gentleman please move aside because I did not recognize him? It's the other way around, the gentleman in the hat is the second one. Baba, is your hand up? Let us wait until we identify it. There's a lady there with a cream t-shirt. Yes, don't look at the back, yes, you. Come forward. The gentleman in front of her, yes, forward. Mama with the hat there. Yes, don't look at the back, it's you with the hat. Come forward. Yes, you can come. How many seats remaining? One. There's a lady there with a pink duke, please come forward. Is that our last speakers for the day? Any other last hand? One, two, three and four at the back. Do you noted those hands? Did you note those hands? There's two hands this side, gentleman in the cap, lady with the white t-shirt, Mama here with the Afro and at the back, a gentleman with the cap. Those four hands as the table, as the chairs are available, please slot them in. So, we'll have those as our last speakers for the day. Again, please state your name and surname and the affiliation you represent. Thank you.
My name is Stevens Betah, I come from Bulua Farmers Association. I would like to greet the officials in the Portfolio Committee before us and all the farmers who are present in this house today. We are thankful and we are very grateful that today Parliament is before us. It's our first time actually coming into contact with our parliamentary officials. We believe also that the contributions that have been made before the Portfolio Committee today, there's quite been lengthy contributions. What I would like to emphasize on my part also as a farmer is that there's been quite a longer period where there were promises made on the part of government that there will be funds provided and intended to be used for farm purposes. But up until today, it's quite only a few number of farmers will be able to be given or rather to be allocated land to use. We would ask and request the government that the program that was facilitated by government, where farmers were being bought on behalf of farmers, that this program must be continued by government. In an area where I come from, or rather in an area where I'm residing, we can't be involved or rather engaged in farming activities because we don't have the land. Even though we do have traditional leadership in the places that we are staying, however, we don't have the land, even if the land that, even the land that we are actually occupying is not separated as to say that this is the land that is demarcated or saved for people to reside in or settlement and also the land that is going to be used for farming purposes. I thank you very much. My name is Sabani Idjuma, I come from Empopomene Under Emgeeni Municipality. The view that Parliament is sharing with us, I think I will concur with it, even though that we are people who does not own any piece of land. However, I believe that as time goes on or goes by, we will end up having some pieces of land that we own. the fact that land is not enough, we don't have access to grazing land. I am a farmer also, I do have cattle that I own, I am in a business of stock farming. However, I find it very difficult to make it in this business simply because we don't get support and we don't get a proper training to know how should we go about doing the business itself. What I've noticed also is that since the grazing land has shrunk in years, this has caused now even the reproduction to slow down. You will find that you keep cattle for a certain period of time and they become unconducive to reproduce, but you'll find that the cows or rather cattle that are coming after the ones that you actually bought upfront is no longer, you are no longer happy with such production. The assistant that you are requesting, the help that we think will be appreciated on the part of government is that at least we will provide it with some pieces of land where we can actually, what the land that we can actually use for our cows or rather for our cattle to graze in because we will find that at some instances, our cattle get run over or hit because we don't have enough land or rather conducive land to use for our livestock. I thank you. My name is Mama Tobi Indawande, I come from a place called Makongo at Umkambatini. I greeted Parliament and also all the farmers who are present in the house. There are quite a number of contributions that have been made before me here and I don't want to repeat some of those. However, I would like to register before the Portfolio Committee to say that the only problem that I think the Parliament needs to sort out is follow-ups in terms of the laws or rather the resolutions that are taken when Parliament is consulting the public because it seems that there is no monitoring on the part of Parliament on the resolutions and also the follow-ups with the community members to know exactly what are the developments. So the youth remains unmotivated when it comes to the issue of agriculture and farming. Because they don't see any value in it. They don't even think it's worth being part of it. Because they don't see any profit from it. We can't therefore be motivating them to do anything with farming because even ourselves, we don't get proper assistance on the part of government. The main reason that I think contributes to that has to do with the follow-ups, has to do with monitoring on the part of government to ensure that whatever resolutions that are taken, whatever agreements, whatever promises that the government promises the people or rather the farmers, they follow up on those things and they inform the public in terms of developments as to what is happening, where, when and how. on the issues that I've already mentioned before this portfolio committee. Part of that includes assistance with the places or other facilities where our cattle can be dipped and also the facilities where we can practice our farming activities and also the seedlings, the material that we can use as to ensure that we enhance our skills. So that even our youth, our children, the young ones can be able to see that this is a business that we can also as youth invest in. This is the business that can actually put food on the table. So that at least they can be motivated by seeing the yield, by seeing the produce, by seeing that they can actually make a living out of agriculture. As we speak now currently, we can't do that because us as elderly people who are doing it but are not seeing anything valuable that we have to show for it. There are laws that the government has put on place and there are good laws. We appreciate them. However, we have a problem of implementation and we have a problem where those laws, it seems that they are not guided. Nobody follows up on them. So as a result, they don't seem to work because nobody gets to benefit from those laws. So what we are saying is that government must ensure that if proper follow-ups are made from the part of government to ensure that when things are being handed over to communities, there are people are going to be delegated to ensure that they follow up those things, to ensure that they reach their intended people. And those people who receive those things, they get proper skills, proper training and proper ways of how to do what they were supposed to do with those things. I congratulate some of the laws that government has put on place for us and I think I appreciate them. However, as I've already stated before this portfolio committee, that follow-ups and monitoring is important. So I think if that is being taken care of, we are going to have a very good government. Thank you very much. My name is Nobule Mkono from Makongo. I greet the honoreables before us here and it's an honor that you came to see us here today. I think it's a great opportunity that the portfolio committee has afforded to us as members of the community to come and engage parliament. However, I also like to concur with the speaker who spoke before me here saying that the laws that government has put on place are good laws. However, the implementation, a part of it, it doesn't seem to be consistent with what was intended by those laws. What I wish to register before this portfolio committee is that I am a woman who also owns a farm. I bought this farm in 2016. When I started farming. After Covid, then I started having a challenge. And after I encountered those challenges, I went to certain departments that deals with land issues. I spoke to Anna Marie at Victoria when I was seeking help. Also, she then appointed me to an irrigation system. But the irrigation system that she was able to make available to me was only sufficient for about a hectare. But it was able to help me a lot because I was able at least to plant tomatoes with that particular irrigation. I think on the part of government it will be very much appreciated if funding was to be received on my part. Because I do have a certain number of people whom I have employed also in that particular farm. However, it's not sufficient or enough as a result because I'm able to do certain things. For example, like paying for my school fees and also to pay their salaries. However, the bond that I have with ABSA, I'm having challenges paying for it. So when I engage with the departments that deals with the process of buying farms, I encounter a challenge and I'm being told that it's not easy to deal with my issue or rather my case because I actually bought this farm and it was not handed over or rather given to me by government. The department I was going sees with helping me go back to the farm. But funding, Mina, as a business person, to have a farm that is fully equipped would actually enable me, I was wanting to challenge, hectares are enough to generate income to be able to service a farm. Well, I would say maybe it is understandable if government is saying that they will not be able to assist me with funds because the farm was bought, it was not given to me by government. But in terms of assisting me with other resources that will make sure that I enhance the way or rather the manner in which I work in the farm, that will help also those whom I've already employed in the farm to ensure that they work better and their salaries improve. I think that shouldn't be an issue on the part of government to support me with those things. I think I also one of those individuals who are, I would say, qualified to be assisted by government. Because if I read from what I have on my hand here, on the booklet that I have in front of me here, it speaks about preservation and also the development of agricultural land, of which I think it's a category that I also fall under. So I believe also that I'm one of those people who should be assisted by government. I have applied to many government institutions for assistance and in applying as well, I'm going to talk like a business plan to do what they call a bankable business plan, now go for no keep him ali and get someone who's a wins a little business plan. But we end the business plan, you don't get a response. The assistant that you are requesting, Mina, is not happy with the situation. While she is not known, she comes from a very background that is not of a high profile, but she deserves to be helped. In my closing, I would like to register before the portfolio committee that assistance in terms of support on my part will be vital and it will ensure that I succeed in this business of mine. And even if it calls for me to go to parliament and sit next to the minister and try to convince the minister about the business that I'm actually running, I'm prepared to do that, even the office of the president itself. I am prepared to approach the office of the president as long as that is going to assist me in ensuring that my business gets the intention, the attention it deserves and I'm able to work the land and I'm able to flourish as a businesswoman as I intend doing so. Thank you very much. I greet parliament and the community at large. I thank you very much. I've heard contributions being made here before parliament. I am Guala. I come from Umswati municipality, also in conjunction with Wind Hill at Umpelanda. We don't have the land. The main issue with us is that we don't have adequate land that you can use both for farming and also to ensure that those who had passed away are given a proper cent of and there's land available for burial purposes of those people. And also, we have an issue with white people who preside over the land in which we are residing because they are not treating us as human beings. So we end up resorting to things that we shouldn't be doing. We end up fighting with them because we don't find any other alternative and any other form of support and also any other form of intervention on the part of government or on the part of officials who are supposed to do that. So we end up being frustrated, the community members, who end up fighting the battle that we ourselves don't understand. We need the intervention of officials to be able to give us assistance in that regard. I would like to register before the portfolio committee that I concur with the submissions that were made before the portfolio committee by my fellow community members who spoke before me here and that I agree with what they've already submitted before the committee. However, I think that more needs to be done on the part of government in ensuring that as citizens we do receive a land that we can own and control also. Because the land or the pieces of land that we are having now does not belong to us and as a result, we can't do anything that we wish to do. You can't farm. There is no farming activity that you can run in those particular land spots. So we really seek intervention on part of government to say that if you can afford us with pieces of land that we can own and use for our own production and for our own settlement without the control of the white elite, that can be an achievement for us. Thank you. Land is essential in the sense that now we are even struggling with pieces of land that you can actually use for burial purposes. Because the white farmers has taken the land that we used to use for that particular purpose and they've established forestry in those land. So now we're finding it difficult to even know where to bury our loved ones in an event they pass away because we don't have a land of our own. So we are seeking intervention on. So we are seeking intervention on part of government to assist us in acquiring in acquiring land.
Aye, ngachi aye, guswa kweleke, ya kwele o gothi parliamente, o ta le, tachile pese ululu kwa ba. Ngoba, simpinjegi, simpinjegi, ngabele sia kwele, asilo, sia kwele. Ngachi tenji, o ngia bonga.
We are pleading with parliament eh to please take this matter as a matter of agency because eh the land eh issue is very vital and it is very important eh that it be taken eh 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 very eh eh with eh 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 quick, very quickly because it doesn't seem that eh those who are owning the land now are not taking us seriously in those places that you are residing. So I think those submissions eh will be eh my final submissions. I thank you very much.
Senbonani, ikamalame ngunenge ngwanda ba, o azalelo indawena sema plazini, Bishopstone.
My name is Ningi Ndaba and I was eh born and brought up at a farm called Bishopstone.
Oh, gule ndawole, esasuswa giona, esasuswa abelu nguba, osallaha indaweni yase azalia.
Were removed from eh the place I've already mentioned of and were placed in a place called Azania.
So gule ndawo, esallaha giona, gesase se kinaseshala konage, singa senasi ndawo, slukes lindilu o gothi sizo buelo umchaba, guse gubimanges na utoli.
But we have challenges because in this new eh area where we we actually eh are located, we're promised that eh we're going to be given proper eh land and proper housing eh facilities. However, we're still waiting up until today. We don't, we haven't seen any of those promises coming to light.
O gothi ge azange sese swa, as 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 ngboni o gothi indlela, esu thola ngawa umchaba asu tholi. So ngasengai kalila o gothi ngibo mlimi umnani, gas tholi ndawo isallaha, ngai esabenzela kuyona.
Due to the fact that eh we've been crying for land for quite eh a very long time with no success, I then established eh a farming project of my own in eh eh an area which I think was not owned by anyone. So I've established eh eh farming eh eh area there and started a farming activity of my own as a young farmer.
Ngao o gothi se abon, samatshu bemsebenza weko, yonki intokfalele o gothi szenzeli ngisandla zako. Ngasengasola, si ndawo yase tambovili, esashala giona. Esabenzisa indawo, engango two hectares, ingisandla zam, ngia zlimela, emesenge awazu o gothi ngikwe te indla.
I I I decided to do this eh due to the fact that employment, we have seen, it's a problem in our country. Most of us as youth were unemployed. So in a place where I'm currently residing, a place called Tamboville, I've established a place of my own there. It's a place that I'm currently using now eh for a farming eh activity. I have a land about, there is about two hectares that I'm actually using eh for eh the farming activity that I'm actually referring to now in order for me to ensure that at least I do something for myself as a young farmer.
Yebu kunzi mangakulu ge oksinta umchavati eh kunzi mangakulu, u wenzange zandla ama resources engeko, tingo okandakando, tingena ko yonki into. Bestela o gothi hulmeni apegelele, abantu aba utzandayo, umsebenzi, u goba ba farm. Nale into o gothi, uma ngabe u sebenza, u kpegelelo ama ko opu. Kuge kpegelelo na bantu aba esabenza bona, ngabotwana, aba aba utzandayo ksebenza, aba utzandayo ksebenza, inlabat na aba utzandayo kfuya, u hulmen bestela o gothi aba pegelere na la ba obantu, la ba o gothi bawa zo kutsbatole indawo, za sema plazini, ba o gothi kutsbasi esabenzeli.
We are pleading with government to ensure that eh those who have already started eh farming activities, those who have already started to to eh to make everyone see that they have the desire eh to go into the farming business, to the farming industry eh to involve themselves in in eh farming activities, that they get eh support. It is very difficult to work the land without eh resources. We don't have eh plowing resources, we don't have the eh the tractors, we don't have the support that we need eh in order for us to make it in this industry and it's very difficult as young farmers and especially as women. So what we are we are going to be asked from the portfolio committee and government is that at least they must intervene in ensuring that they eh they provide support eh mostly to those who desire eh to be eh to be involved in the industry or rather in the agricultural sector, to ensure that they support them and make and make them eh eh prospect in terms of ensuring that they thrive in whatever that they do in the agricultural sector.
Ulmen yasi pinsiza, yasi za futi, gazozonki zintengi nganeglezo indawoleze si esabenza. Kotu angoba, asiko indaweni rights o gothi si esabenza, si kwa zo o gothi si sabalan. Ngoba, nje ngoba ngino two hectares, ye ongi esabenza ngisandla, ngia fisa namu o gothi nkule, ngalo konje ngisabenza infutulu, ngia fisa namu o gothi ngelini langa, ngikwa o gothi ngenze, tlampe u fifteen hectaresi, ngikwa o gothi ngenze, uteti ngi lokengikula nganeganga. Ulmen yasniga izinto, mesegutile zindawoleze si zona, asquazu, sia faga, tlampa snige zo tringo, ne mbewu, meseguye biwa, ngoba, indawo esigiona, agiona, indawo eh rights o gothi si esabenza.
Government does eh eh give us eh certain things eh, does support us eh with eh things like fencing and also the seedlings and other things eh to use in those particular farms. I've already eh made mention before this eh eh portfolio committee that I do have about two hectares eh, that's a piece of land that I use eh eh to farm. However, I'm finding it difficult to maintain eh that eh plot of land eh because there are people who are, I would refer to them as criminals. They just come there and steal whatever that we produce, they still even defend itself. So you'll find that it is difficult now to maintain and it is even worse eh more difficult to go back to government to say that what you've given us were no longer in position of same because criminals have came and then they've taken everything away. So now we need to start all over again. I want to grow as a young farmer. I'm owning about two hectares, as I've mentioned, but I would like to own three hectares, four hectares, or even more than that in future. So for me to be able to accomplish or rather to achieve that, I need the support of the government to ensure that they work with me and groom me to become better in future.
Sitela o gothi hulmen apegelela abantu aba no utzando, lokuba aba limi. Kulime kufue aba farm, abantu aba no utzando, kpegelelo kakuna la aba bantu aba emele ngabotwana, kunga loku kpegelelo ama cooperative, nga sosonki scats. Ngoba, u ksebenza, u ksebenza uwe to, kweznis katu, uyawazu o u u u u u u u nje ngoba ose businessin, ubonu o gothi kula kanjani, ubonu o gothi operita kanjani. Kotu manje, uma ngabe o gozo pegelela ama cooperative, sina eszenzela, esisbambela, o goshu o gothi ange sese schooli, sia kwele o gothi hulmen na ti asipi ama thuba o gothi sitholi am umchaba, yo kwa yo kwa o gothi si esabenza.
I I I will plead with government eh to not only focus eh the resources or rather only to channel the resources to cooperatives because there are some of us who are also working the land but are not part of those cooperatives. We also seek assistance on the part of government to ensure that even though we are working on our own and we are not part of those cooperatives eh, but eh we are also able to benefit eh from what the government offers as support to us as young farmers. And also eh we need eh, I need to register before the portfolio committee that funds, support, emotional support and whatever a form of support that governments will give, you must eh you must make sure that such is given to people who has the love for farming, not just to everyone because you'll find that there are people who are in it but they don't have eh the love, the desire, the will and the courage to work the land. So I'm saying those who have the courage and they love the business and they love eh farming and agriculture must be properly identified and those are the people that should benefit from government support. Thank you.
Yeah, bongaka kuli.
Bingalele eh parliamente, nge ngalele noza kuitu, mpa nga.
Um, greetings to parliament and greetings to um our colleagues and the members of the community.
Eh, ikamalame nguvu noa, kama mlava, opuma eh moyimbofana.
I am Vuyoga Kamlava from Moyimbofana.
Eh, oka panska Sianoba, Plaza Water Committee.
I'm part of Sianoba and I also serve in the water committee.
Oh, inde, asabe kulume loza kuitu, ngata, nengsa, ngaslokspinda, pindayo, deskela, indesikela manje, u hulmenuetu, ifanding.
Much has been covered by my colleagues that I wouldn't like to repeat eh, but the on the main thing that we ask from our government is funding.
Uze kupua oso ma business, lava ngana, lava farm, uze esoli ngana, naba abelu, lava paspa pa sa, imaplasini.
So that emerging farmers will also develop, so that we can match these farmers who are abusing us in these farms.
Si bona hulmenuetu sfayila, ngendeles eh agas nagengayo imaplasini.
We see our government failing us the way we feel so deserted and rejected in the farms.
Si bona etanda kula ma forena hunat.
We 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 see government preferring foreigners over us.
Sia kwele government o gothi sees, nje ngoba government etomi amesembo tela, ozo pinde futa lfu na evo te late, moyambo.
We ask our government to bail us out. This is a democratic elected government. It's a black government who will come back to us for a vote again.
Mzoba mbi shala, ngia bong.
I'll be brief. Thank you so much.
Eh, ngizo bingerela, abalonisha eh parliamente, kanyo noza kuitu aba limi.
I greet all the honourable members of parliament and my colleagues, the farmers.
Ikamalame ngumakosazani, ngowakwabe.
My name is Makosazani Kwabe.
Nguma indawena sema Kongo, eskotinsaza esbananeni.
I am from an area called Makongo, in an area called eh Vananeni.
Ezipanani.
Ezipananeni.
Eh, mina, nginatsi ngia chablera, o goba, o goba, ilu ngarala umchanga no, ngumli mi olima ngayetwa.
I'm happy to be part of this meeting. I'm a farmer. I farm individually, don't belong to a co-op.
Umtezo, umtezo zivinya, so thola namchane, ngao chablera ku, enfutu ngao support.
The, I find the proposed bill today, sub uh submitted today exciting and I support it.
Eh, ngikale u lima, ngoba, ngine nginana pasu o gothi, umunta kasebenzi, ngansebenzi, imnyaga yami, isi e vilego thirty five, angashegi, otsumo apla tuwa, otsumtala, manje ukai o gothi, nteoba, oso above thirty five. When ozo shona, ozo epilisa ngani, ngoba, iskatza manje sitenga, am imali no mnozo, forty, au au pilo ngindawo, auwagafi, na wipensini, u u below sixty, kati saida o gothi, angilime, o goze ngazu o gothi ngipilise, za mi business la.
I resorted to farming because I'm above thirty five and I'm unemployed. I had no job and I wouldn't qualify to get any other jobs because they normally look for young people below age of thirty five. I can't even get any grant from government because I'm not even yet sixty years. So I resorted to farming to provide for myself.
Isstrela za mi, u hulmenuetu esutanda yo, o gothi strela, asina yegeli, aspegelere, ngoba, uma gua o votwa, akshi o gothi kuvotoa, abantu aba nimnyaga eti yili.
My request to our government is that to look after us, try to partner and help us out because when they are looking for votes, they are not looking for people below the age of thirty five. They are looking for all of us to vote them.
Engikwela yon, ngikwela u gulegelele, ga ekbiye ni, ngoba ngi na indawo lapeka, ngansebenza, ngia chabla, ngia lima, ke pa u u, tingo selultala, inkomo asina inkambi, sateruti stole, biyele inkambi, ngoba inkomo sia kalusa, sia surazu, lasizola, o gotha wezu.
My request is for fencing. I'm farming eh eh an area in around my house but eh I'm cared carefully in the area. They are finishing our our produce. So we are requesting for for an assistance with 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 fencing.
Npinde ngikwela, futsu hulmen o gothi aspegelere, ngo okandakanda, bu kuslimela, ngoba, sia lima, ulime ngemali akoyo kina, okandakanda bayabi, za fukulime, upinde futsu tabule, utabule ngenyimali, ote ngenezmbewu, kuya bi, za besingakwela, o gothi hulmenuetu aspegelere, sina abanga ba botwana, ngoba, sese enteleo nzonas.
Farming is a very expensive exercise, even those of us farming individually. We ask government to assist with tractors, that they also eh eh do um eh made available, service, our services of tractors be made available to us so that you may be able because eh the the fertilizers, the seedlings, the whole process is a very expensive exercise.
Eh, om, o goonya futsu hulmenuetu bengakchabla, o gothi, ugonaloko kasa, okasa, eh 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 ndaweni zo kchala, ngigengi ngikwela o gothi men kchala, juwa, nginge na indawo biyere, ga shen, ngikwa, ngichale ama veti, akete gileyo, nganga kwa zo kchala ama veti, kuma sizi no onke.
Yes, because I'm farming without proper fencing, so I am forced and coerced to to farm particular veggies and not farm others and I don't, I farm only on particular seasons, not throughout the seasons. I don't take advantage of the land available to me because of a lack of resources.
O goonya futsu, agugono, glima, kela, engwenza yoyo, ngifule, ne inkomo, ne mbozi, bengakwela, o gothi hulmenuetu, esimtanda oti, asipegelele, o gothi asipkasege, inkomo swazu o gothi stole, na ti saisele lukwetu ngan.
I'm not only farming crops, I also have livestock, cackle and goats. Eh, would love government just to meet us halfway so that we increase the existing stock that we have and grow and 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 be like commercial farmers.
Ngise akona, la bufusen komeni, ne mchovo, nama tipu kuya bi, za utolu o gothi inkomo ipilile, melu hambo ote ngumchova, besingakwela jupegelere, ga na la bufuskasege, ndaweni zezemisi, zo ngayega, ngoba futsi, nindawo le, eh inkambi, eh inkomo. Eh inkomo zihamba la, ema tegeni, emaba deni, abantu aba etanti, ba ipujela da abantu abila, yon, o goba ziyabasho, kandi, sinne, ngolelo o gothi men ngabe konu inkambi, lasanga ibega konu, ekweleni, ngabe zipepili.
Um, there's a lot of cackle roaming around homes and they are finishing eh crops in our gardens. If government can assist us with that designated area that would be fenced, that will keep all the livestock in the area, it will, it will help a great deal and and these cackle, when they move around, some people hate them, they don't like them, they they hate them, they damage them, they pour hot water on them. So we ask government to assist.
Asipinde naso futsi inkomo, zizi le ochan, zizi le, I mean, zili plastik, o plastik bayi ekulisha. Nse, eguninki, nse, o goyichale.
These uncared for cackles, they also eat plastics and eh they get sick and eh you know, so it's quite a number of eh factors that are affecting our livestock farming.
Ngenakchabla, ngenakchabla eh. Ngenakchabla, o gothi stole osezo, ngoba ngia kholela, u hulmenuetu, o gothi nje juwa namchane, sibiziyo, xolalele zivosezu, ginetemba o gothi esizo wazu, o gothi sti tholi impendulo, no istrela, o gothi sazu, o gothi njewa desfigiri namchane, ingobe la panbi ni ti.
I'll be happy if we find any help like because we still have some faith in our government and we, the fact that we invited here and we came and we add our views. We believe that they'll be adhered to and there shall be progress and we'll also be updated with some feedbacks.
O goonya sen ngipeta, ngizo kwele o gothi ye, nje ngoba ngi oso ma business, nje futsi npinde ngibo mlimi, ginetemba o gothi, uma eh business na milpumelela, ngeye goze ksisaga le minakwela, zo wazu o gothi ngashen abanya bantu.
I am hopeful that as an entrepreneur, as an emerging entrepreneur, should my business be successful, I'll be able to employ others so that there will be job creation and opportunities for more other people. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I greet you. Let's stick to the limited four minutes allocated. Greetings to Parliament and all the farmers present today. I am Special Zondi. I am from Umgeni, municipality in an area called Popomeni.
From what level?
From what level, particularly. I run a pickery business.
Now, one, I support, reason being, it has proved South Africa, agriculture is the only sector that was keeper with junk status whenever it was.
I therefore support this proposed bill without any hesitation because it has proven without any shadow of doubt that agriculture is the only sector that can bail the country out of a junk economic status. With all the imbalance in the agricultural sector, we ask for intervention as government because there's a whole lot of imbalance in the issues of land ownership in South Africa. We as black people also should be afforded an opportunity to own the land too.
With all the imbalance in the agricultural sector, we ask for intervention as government because there's a whole lot of imbalance in the issues of land ownership in South Africa. We as black people also should be afforded an opportunity to own the land too.
I would like to request you to revisit and relook at the blended finance that was allocated, approved last year. It was a joint venture of the Land Bank and the Department of Agriculture to assist financially emerging and black farmers. So please revisit that so that that funding is also accessible to emerging farmers at the grassroots level.
Okay, three is the issue regarding red tape pending with agriculture. A thing of environmental impact assessment.
The main issue that you need to look at is the issue of red tape in the agricultural sector, in the agricultural industry. Especially those of us just starting in the pickery business. There is environmental assessments called EIA which cost hundreds of thousands. So for you to grow to commercial level, you must get those assessments in place. And it becomes practically impossible for many to go to become a commercial. We also would employ you to open up the market for us, small and emerging black farmers. For instance, schools, they get food from government, hospitals from government, correctional services from government. Make it sure, make it a point that you ensure that you increase the percentage of the stock that you buy, buying particularly from black and emerging farmers. Make sure that you increase that. Then that will actually empower emerging black farmers and it will also rotate money in black communities that have been excluded for the longest time. My concluding remarks in the township I reside in along R six one seven.
One seven, yes. Buloposton Road, a road going towards Underberg.
Yeah, driving towards Underberg?
Yes. Now, opposite the township, une Plaza about two hundred and forty-five hectares, elten weengo two thousand and three liter. Now, that's a pending claim.
In an area I come from, in a township called Popoma, there is opposite the township of twenty-six thousand people with thirty-five percent unemployment rate. There is an opposite farm there with two hundred and forty-five hectares. That is not productive, yet it's owned by a certain community trust. That farm should be providing jobs for these people on the other side of the road. Shall we, we're then asking for government to intervene speedily because there's pending claims for so long that have been going on for that farm. Thank you. Greetings to all leaders from Parliament in your respective offices and ranks. Greetings all the officials in Department of Agriculture. And my colleagues, in the name of Jesus, I greet them. I am Mrs. Damine from Impendle Municipality. I'm a delegate of my organization of which our staffs to come and listen, but I got an opportunity to comment, of which I will do that, but let me first state by saying, let's start by saying, it's difficult to comment on something that is already planned, pre-planned. Reason I'm saying that in our areas where we come from, we live in tribal land. Tribal land is different from private land, so we wish that our course or tribal authorities, tribal leadership should have been consulted first before we're invited to come and sit down here. My plea is that we increase funding agricultural projects led by young people. It will help young people, take them from drugs and help them out in the dilemma that they find themselves in. We're asking for the intervention, emergent intervention of the Department of Agriculture in our area in Impendle. The grazing land, the grazing fields were consumed by wildfires. Our livestock right now have got no food. There is no food for our livestock. So we're asking for the Department of Agriculture to quickly intervene in our area. I believe Parliament visiting us today is sent, they are mandated to see us. So my request to them is that all our political leaders, whenever you fight for political interest or political gain, don't do it at our own expense because we at the grassroots level suffer the most. Whenever there is good things happening at your levels, we don't know about it, but you only come to us when you need something from us like the vote. We are asking for the intervention of the Department of Agriculture in the matters of stock theft. We've got a particular farmer in our area called Bruce. His name is Bruce. If your cow went missing for some reason and it's kept in an area called skid, Bruce will sell your cow or your cackle for his own personal gain without getting anything. By the time you get there in day number three or for you to claim back your cow, if you don't come, according to the stipulated time, Bruce sells our cackle. So we're asking Department to quickly intervene how we wish that its government, is the department that was handling all that stock theft or skid that they refer as skid. Thank you. Greetings to Parliament. My colleagues who are farmers. I am from Katulani in Watfai. Yes, we're co-op. I am Tandiwengobo. Okay, from Ganoshes. Yeah, we are a vegetable farming co-op, but we have a problem with our fencing that is the way and tier of our fence. As soon as we leave our garden, the goats, they come and they feed on our crops. We are asking government to quickly assist us with proper fencing. There is hectares upon hectares of land that we can't even work at this point. Those hectares upon hectares of land lying unused because we are lacking strength and capacity. We ask government to assist with tractors so that those areas We ask government to assist with tractors so that those areas can be farmed again because we know that those farms are arable and they can produce very good food. And those fields that we don't farm, grass has overgrown and then next thing at night fire would start and that is why even our fences get demolished because of some wildfires that are started by unkept or unattended fields. Sometimes in one year after a long while, we'll see a tractor coming and it will come and just then work only one field for somebody else, one or two, and then off they go, they disappear with no trace. We're asking simply for the tractor, we're asking for the fence. We are of age now and we are very diligent. We are working these fields. We want to take care of our families using this very land, using these very fields. Thank you. Greetings, my name is Thobile Madlala from Pofana. From Watu. I'm rising because I heard there is Department of Agriculture, I want them to take note of the problem we are facing. A farm was bought for us by government in way back in 2006 up until today, the farm is not functional. We're asking for their assistance. We don't have hectares, we don't have water, but we want to start farming. We also have a registered co-op that's doing poultry, we've been running for three months. If we find any help in growing that, we'd appreciate also. Thank you. Parliament along there. To the entire parliament. I'm from Mshwati Municipality in a place called Wendy Hill. We got complaints. In the area where we from. There is very possessive folks. We can't do anything as people in the area. We got kids sitting at home unemployed. And then even when we stumble upon opportunities, but we can't do anything with that because We are asking for government intervention in our area that the land be restored back to us, be returned back to us. Electricity where we stay will pay highest 360. There is no municipal grant in our area. Thanks so much to all of you who made oral and written submissions. And all those of you that attended this meeting and stayed up until now. Our program still continues. We are at a time where you'd need to get some answers to some of the issues you raised in this very meeting. I will then ask. After her, Mr. Mndweni will come. There will answer to some, I know they won't answer every other issue raised. What's important is you open our ears and take cognizance of the answers given.
Thank you, Chairperson, and good afternoon to all members of the Portfolio Committee and also the farmers and all invited guests. From the department side, I think listening to all inputs that we have received today, there was no actual direct request from the bill itself. However, we have noted that there is need for us to continuously support farmers and work collaboratively with the province from the national and also the local spheres of government. We will continue to work with other sector departments internally, especially some of the issues that were raised around Ester land rights and also some of the issues that were raised in terms of program implemented by creating enabled environment so that we can collaborate. This include the farmers' unions such as Afassa so that we are able to take the message through appropriate structures. I will leave my details so that if there is any queries, then we can be able to follow up on them. My cellphone number is zero six six. Zero one nine. Zero six six zero one nine zero eight four nine. The email address is L U A H E L P D E S K at D A L R D dot G O V dot Z A. So I will repeat the email address is L U A H L H E L P D E S K at D A L R D dot G O V dot Z A. We will be sitting there after the meeting if there are any people who would like to come to us, we can be able to attend. Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you so much then, Mr. Mndweni will take the podium. Greetings to the Chair, Honorable Stumold Damine and all the honorable members of the Portfolio Committee. Greetings all the members of the community in attendance. All my colleagues in different departments. We listen to all the matters raised, particularly those talking directly to the Department of Agriculture. From the Department of Agriculture, Rural Development and Land Reform. One tablet, one by one matters and concerns raised, but I will answer holistically. Many of you were coming from Mshwati. You spoke at length about the abuse you are experiencing in those farms. Farm dwellers and labor tenants with different needs for intervention. One of the ladies that spoke, officials have already touched base with her because it was the first time we hear an issue of that kind. Other speakers were fully aware of their concerns and our office here in the province right here in Marispek is working on those. I have my colleagues here seated at the back, one of them, you know him very well, Mr. Chomontuli. And the office manager here in Marispek, Mr. Ndovela. Situated at the back there. We'll definitely attend to that matter because even people staying in farms must get the land. There is a law called Ester, there is a law that talks to labor tenants that needs to put forward some claims. Those two laws give power to government to protect farm dwellers and labor tenants with relations to access to land. Law provides various ways and means for us to protect our people, especially those that came out for us to help. Another option, law provides us the right to buy them land? By liaising with the landowner? Where we agree and negotiate on a percentage or a portion of land allocated to labor tenants and farm dwellers. We also agree on the price and the amount going to purchase that land for. We buy those lands for labor tenants and farm dwellers and then they become owners of the land that they live in. Many have registered interest on agricultural land. Unfortunately, land doesn't grow, the same allocation that we had will always have. Even that agricultural land that government has purchased to hand over to people is not much, can meet all the needs. Whatever agricultural land that we purchased, we gave to a certain individual, for some reason they desert. We advertise and find a replacement. And then we'll hand it over, we'll pass it over to the next successful candidate after the careful interviews. Also matters submitted by Nobu Hlemthunu, we're fully aware of that, we are still on it, working on it.
Also matters submitted by Nobushemthunu, we're fully aware of that, we are still on it, working on it.
Yoganxilo ke bakono oza kwe tu yigakulu pete mkgungunyovu.
My colleagues are here, especially the one in charge of mkgungunyovu is here, Marispec.
Konano utatuetu tuli, osabenza gakulu nama co-ops.
We got Tuli who also works closely with co-ops.
Bazwile, ngobangzwile, abaningi yigakulu omaama, ngigubalulile, ngiokucho omaama, gakula bati siya sabenz, obaba bati siya fuun.
Especially what I noted is that mothers are saying, we are already farming, we are already working, but when you listen to men, men are saying, we still want to, we still intend to work, we will work one day.
Baningi ke, omaama bateba ma co-ops, basabenza ma kongo, lapemshwati.
Here mothers are working, in ma omshwati and different places, mothers are working.
Sizoba fakashela.
We are coming, we'll visit you.
Utuli nange, tuli sugoma bakbono, ma konabezo zakwen.
There is Tuli, she runs co-ops, woman please go to her, approach her, talk to her.
Agu shokucho, sugua zukunseza nonke ganyega.
Obviously we won't help all of you same time right away.
Gotwa ngoba snenje tlage ining, siasabenzana, neminyange, yashuka shuke.
But we've got different structures, different departments, we work in collaboration, help will come.
Sugua zukutu ganyani, ganyani si ilegelele lasanga ilegelela.
Definitely bit by bit, help will find you.
Ngikabanguti lezo, ngazitinda gakulu, abuseko es, ngikabanguti niphiile.
I think those are the issues I can highlight for today, much.
Sambegre, eukina, ile yata duetu tobile madala.
I'll cover tobile madala's matter.
Olapa, Watu, Emoy River.
From Watu, Emoy River, is it?
Emoy River ya.
Yes.
Maningi gama plaze swatengile Emoy River, ayabizwe nama fifty-two farms.
We've, we've bought, we purchased a couple of farms in Emoy River, we call them fifty-two farms.
Siyasutma ngingi angasabenz.
We're also fully aware, many of them are not being used.
Unohlele sulkanda yo, esilbizangolo ama FPSU.
We've developed a program that we call FPSU.
Esilsebenza nomas balawas in Bofana.
We're working that with the Bofana municipality.
Luholwa umfue tu uzwakale Ndovela, ou director wa la emkungunyovu, emnyangu.
It's led by Director, Mr. Ndovela.
Lo luthelo, lutisizo, guaka iFPSU oku isakio sezinziza, esizobalapa, ngikabangutu Watu ingale, ngogo manana farm, correct? Yes, lesisakio sisakelu kuti, sifake koni seziza, okandakanda na yonki into etingwa umli.
We will build a structure where we provide all kinds of resources from contractors and any other help that a farmer needs.
Konna, onge la maplaza lapana, abali mayo bezoguwa zukutu baye konna, batole usizo.
So that all those farms in Emoy River, those farmers should go there for help so that farming business takes shape.
Ma eseyakega shley FPSU sugua zukuti, sisabenza nomnyango waga agriculture ku province.
When this FPSU has been successfully formed, it will work with the Department of Agriculture in the province?
Silegelele gashle, no kuti, kube nama production inputs yonki into, abantu balagele le iskashanistiza, bazi bakwa zukusmele.
We also help with production inputs so that emerging farmers will be able to stand on their own.
Siitatileke, kongokshiyo, oku ingenga nyukuti, iinombolo bezngaxiyo, gotwa sotale, lukutigulela, tafulela pe mufa, ma konna osafuna utashie umialezo, shambegale konaxi umialezo.
We've taken note of all your problems but unfortunately you were not saying your cell numbers here, so all the matters that you raised here that you want them to quickly follow up, go to the table at the back there, leave your cell numbers, we'll touch base.
Ngzoguenzake, njongo butatueto lapepitoli nzi le ngxie imneni ngwane ya.
Like the Director from Pretoria did, my colleague, I'll also leave my number.
Amakolza ngdrye lugu apendula.
I hardly answer calls on my cellphone.
Yes, zatso kuti iskatesne, ngishali ngiise mshanga nuweli, njongo ba ngiise mshanga nuweli nama.
Because most of the time, I'm in meetings, like I am in a meeting right now.
Oksesayo, okutungsendele umkafazo, nomi WhatsApp, silda lo WhatsApp.
A WhatsApp message or an SMS will be more effective, let's rather play WhatsApp.
Your number, eight oh eight two?
Nan zoi number.
Triple eight, six two, eight two. Oh eight two, triple eight, six two, eight two. Me number intatu, nje kpele number ya. Email, ntsa ntsa, ayake konka wasukumpala, angtingukumpala. Dot mndaweni, mn, mndaweni, at dalrd.gov.za. Ntsa ntsa, dot mndaweni, at dalrd.gov.za. Angbonge gakulu, ngbonge, ne asetafleni ngapambi.
Thank you so much for your time and to the main table.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mndaweni.
Sibonge, ubabu Mndaweni.
And I must also say, Lydia Basochi.
And also, naguwe, leaders Basochi.
We are concluding now.
Siya ovala manje omshanga no.
The committee will be holding this public hearings on the pedal bill in all provinces as it has been mentioned earlier.
Lele committee ge zolo ku itola izinvo zabantu, njoba bekshiyo kaleni, na wamanyama province, amabilek sayo aguo.
We only left with the Eastern Cape and the Western Cape.
Seksela kpele manje, Eastern Cape ne Western Cape.
At the conclusion of this, the committee will collate all the inputs made on the pedal bill.
Omasestratileri zonki fundazwe, icommittee zobe sasitoka zonki zinvo eisho abantu guizwe lonke.
Including written submissions that have been submitted in response to the newspaper adverts.
Gonye nala abo abapali lebe bona kushwe mapipin, bapaala bapa lele parliament, nalo ku giokoko, ngerekshiyo.
And through this process.
Ganyenani enfigile nazisholo mazinyo, nalo ku giokoko akshitile.
The Department of Agriculture, Land Reform and Rural Development, which is represented here, will be expected to respond to all the inputs and submissions that have been made on the bill.
Umnyango ge okona wakwa, umnyango we, wezulimo, tutukisa, gomshaba, ganyen, tutukisa gomnoto, wasemakaya, uyobe usi apendula, guzo zonki zetu lo, nishilula.
I must mention, as Lydia mentioned earlier, that you seemed to have said very little on the bill.
Angpau le, njoba eshilo ulit, kalen kuti, nisho, ngati nisho okunane, gakulu mayela na nomteto svivinyo.
But what we have said here is very, very important.
Gotwa, ronke nikshilula, kubalulege gakulu.
We are taking it on course as we have responded, Mr. Mndaweni and Mrs. Lydia.
Siyaku, shikilela, siyakopa njoba nishilo, nomzanu Mndaweni, nongosaza ne ulit.
The committee has a responsibility.
Icommittee ge li nomtwa lo, nomanina nomsebenzi.
Of ensuring that what you put across, it listens to.
Oguti konke nikshoyo, icommittee laklalela.
And give response although it's gonna take us through all the provinces that have been gone through.
Icommittee faneli lalele beseli apendula, gotwa faneli sitkate zonki ifundazwe zezwele tu.
And then prepare the report.
Beses shanganisa umbiko, osho zonki zinvo zen.
That report will be taken through the processes within parliament.
Lo umbiko, nomalo, ngouzo hamba ge imkutu, lapayay parliament.
Will go to the NCOP.
Izoya lapayagui NCOP.
After which then the process can go to the President.
Emvenuka loko besi, guyo umbiko, uyagumengameli.
Then there will be a law.
Omungamilesesai ndilege, segioba umteto lo.
When it is the law, we all are expected to follow the law.
Omaseku umteto, songeslinde luku ti, shambegononina silandela umteto.
I know that we also have been criticized here.
Ngiyazutu sikagiwe gakulu lapa?
Correctly so.
Siya ivumi ndugu, ayimpela ankabi bang.
Of not implementing the good laws that are there.
Oguti umtetemi hle konna, siwe matinta nyao, okuti siyenz.
I must say indeed I agree with you that that must change.
Ayangishi kuti nyavumela na nanimpela kuti, iya, loko kumele kushinch.
But I must also give you some few numbers of the other people that you must continue to interact with.
Ngalukunigaza, nami infono fono zaba anye, ekfaneli kubege kuti nkomane naabo.
Angaze, ati Umdaweni no Lydia ubeklinswati nala paya.
I don't want, Mr. Mndaweni and Leader, to say, no, they were just slaughtering the two of us.
Locally, Mr. Guazi Llongwa.
Konna lapa, emsundu, zukunumzanu Guazi Llongwa.
The email address, it's Guazi.
O Guazi, email address yake, njobe zoe isho, mshonisho. Bonabanye bayapala, gotwa ngbona banyaba ipali, angtingsho yu contact. This is a contact that you should reach here in Marispec.
I will repeat this email address, it's Guazi, Telephone, oh one two, three one nine, seven six, three four. Oh one two, three one nine, seven six, three four. The name, Gabongiwe Tabede. It's bongiwe dot tabede, at kzn, d a d r r d, dot gov, dot za. I hope I'm correct here, it's bongiwe dot, at kzn, d a d r r d, gov, dot za. The number there, yala emkungunyovu. Oh three three, three five five, nine three, four seven. One cellphone, oh seven six, six four one, two five, three five. Just a sitar, like kzn. Then, the number here, PA, Yagamminister Utogo Dida. It is Nobisa Kali, that is the name. Oh sixty, nine seven six, three three, six one. Zero six, zero nine, seven six, three three, six one. The email, it's pa, dot minister, at d a, l, r r d, dot gov, dot za. Again, PA, dot minister, at d a l, r r d, dot gov, dot za. As we have been doing, I hope I'm not wrong to say, there is lunch served after this meeting?
Njengo batislo kusenza, ngentomta ngenziputuma ngitai, sekone zilula, oma sipu oma, nomshanga no.
And I can request that proper arrangements are done for everybody to be able to eat.
Yakel ukti impela sihlele, ukti wonkumto konala, aktolo ge angasitunji.
But be ordered in a manner that we consider the fact that we have older people.
Si kapela utisnabanta bati ala paga tuku etu.
We allow them space first.
Sbaniga zitu bakala tinese basha.
So I thank you all and I thank the committee, the Chairperson has indeed apologized for leaving earlier.
Nginbonge nonke, ngibonge ne committee ustalo ukolisile kuti, ashashashie.
And I thank you all and I thank the teams that have been working so well for us to succeed and come at this point of closure of this meeting.
Nginbonge nonke, nginbonge nokozakueti, sbespa besene na abukuzo, nomshanga no be impumelelo.
Thank you very well, thanks.
Siabonga gakulu.
Sia, sia bongaka kuu.